Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the swearing in ceremony for the City of Prattville's 2025 through 2029 Quadrinium. I'm your City Clerk Paula Barlow. We will have Justice Bill Lewis now deliver our invocation.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Feel bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Today, we think of service. We know that some of the most important of your commandments are to love you and to love each other. And in this country, Lord, it seems like we are forgetting those commandments. The very crux to those is service, and that's why we're here today. These folks, these councilmen, this mayor, this council, has been chosen to serve their community. And so, we ask that you walk with them, Lord. We ask that you, that they serve through you, that your word is obvious in their service. We pray for this country. We pray for the city of Prattville, because we are stronger together than we are apart, and that we keep your commandment learned and keep loving each other. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Justice Lewis. Mayor Bill Gillespie will now be sworn in by Attorney Andrew Odom. Mayor, would you and anyone that you wish standing with you, please come forward?
Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bill Gillespie, Jr.
I, Bill Gillespie, Jr.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I can continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties.
I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties.
of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Gillespie, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
To our city council, the department heads, families, friends, and the other citizens of Prattville, thank you for being here today, whether in person or spirit. So stand before you today, ready to honor the oath for my fourth full term as your mayor. I am both humbled and deeply honored by the continued vote of confidence from this community. Your trust me in anything to me is a privilege that I do not take lightly. When I first took this oath in 2011, Prattville was in a very different place. We were facing one of the most difficult times, financial periods at that time. We were facing periods in our city's history where the financial footprint was heavy. Our reserves were low and hard decisions had to be made. Those were tough days, but they're also defining days. I hope and pray that we do not allow politics to get back in our decision-making process. We tightened our belts, rebuilt our reserves, restructured our finances, and restored public trust. Today, we stand on solid financial grounds. Our city's credit rating has been upgraded, our departments are fully staffed and better equipped than ever before. Our services are stronger than ever. We are a mechanized, service-oriented organization created to serve. Together, we built not just facilities and partners and confidence, stability and culture of teamwork across every department. We both acquired St. Paul's, improved roads, expanded recreation, supported education, and brought new jobs and industries to Prattville. None of this was done by one person. No one person can do everything. It was done by a community that believes in progress, accountability, and partnership. To every city employee, council member, and citizen who played a part, thank you. You helped turn one of Prattville's hardest chapters into one of our greatest success stories. As we begin this new term, I look forward to working closely with our city council, especially our two bookend councillors. Each brings fresh perspective, new energy, and a shared desire to see Prattville continue to thrive. Together with experience at the center and new voices on the end, I'm confident we'll keep moving this city forward with balance, vision, and respect. Now pledge all these things from me. My commitment remains the same as it was the first day of 2011, to serve every citizen with honesty, integrity, and respect, to continue investing in the people and infrastructure that makes Prattville strong, and ensure that the progress we've made today lays a foundation for generations to come. Stephanie and I, and our family, are deeply grateful for the trust you place in us and for the privilege for serving this incredible community we call home. We've proven that if Prattville stands together, there's no challenge we cannot overcome, and no limit of what we can achieve. We were tried, tested, and proven, and the best is yet to come. So thank you, God bless you, and God bless the city of Prattville.
Thank you, Mayor Gillespie. Our city councils will now take their oath of office in order by district. Councillors, once you're sworn in, if you'll please take your seat on the dais. Councilor-elect Wade Newman will be sworn in by the Honorable Jay Thompson. Councilor-elect Newman, would you and anyone that you wish standing with you, please come forward?
If you would please put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Wade Newman.
I, Wade Newman.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I can continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
and I will faithfully and honestly discharge the office of the duties that I am discharged thereof and about to enter.
to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Counselor Marcus Jackson will be sworn in by the Honorable Bill Lewis and the Honorable Joy Booth. Counselor Jackson, would you and anyone that you wish standing with you, please come forward?
All right, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
Marcus Jackson.
Marcus Jackson.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support.
that I will support.
the Constitution.
the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the State of Alabama.
and the State of Alabama.
so long as I.
so as long as I.
continue.
continue.
a citizen.
a citizen.
thereof.
thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of city councilor.
of city councilor.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Councilman, congratulations.
Congratulations, y'all. Thank you, y'all. Did very well. Congratulations.
Councilman Jackson requested that I would pray for him, and we want to honor that. Gracious God, our Father, we thank you for this moment. We thank you for this day. Father God, we ask that you would bless this city, bless this oncoming city council. We ask that you continue to bless this councilman, Jackson, to stand strong, Father God. In times like these, we need you. Bless this country, Father God, and we'll forever give y'all the honor, praise, and glory. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Counselor John Chambers will be sworn in by the Honorable Louis Colley. Counselor Chambers, would you and anyone that you wish standing with you, please come forward?
If you would place your left hand upon the Bible, raise your right hand to God, and state after me.
Yes, sir.
I, John Chambers.
I, John Chambers.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so as long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
and honestly discharge.
and honestly discharge.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
upon which I'm about to enter.
upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Counselor Tommy Merrick will now be sworn in by the Honorable Louis Colley. Counselor Merrick, would you and anyone that you wish standing with you, please come forward?
God. I, Tommy Merrick.
I, Tommy Merrick.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office.
discharge the duties of the office.
upon which I'm about to enter.
upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my abilities.
to the best of my abilities.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Counselor Whaley, will you and anyone that you wish standing with you, please come forward?
And if you would place your left hand upon the Bible and raise your right hand to God. I, Michael P. Whaley.
I, Michael P. Whaley.
solemnly swear that I.
solemnly swear that I.
will support the Constitution of the United States.
will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
and honestly discharge.
and honestly discharge.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
upon which I'm about to enter.
upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Counselor Stritchett, would you and anyone that you wish standing with you, please come forward?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Robert Stritchett.
I, Robert Stritchett.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
and that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter.
the duties of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Counselor-elect Thea Langley will be sworn in by the Honorable Judge Booth. Counselor-elect Langley, would you and anyone that you wish standing with you, please come forward?
I, Thea Barnes Langley.
I, Thea Barnes Langley.
do solemnly swear.
do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
and the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
so long as I am a citizen thereof.
so long as I am a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office in which I'm about to enter.
discharge the duties of the office that I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Merrick.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchett. Counselor Langley. I now call this meeting to order. The time is 10:20 a.m. We will now move into nominations for the elections of officers. Do I hear a nomination for President of the Prattville City Council?
Yes, I'll nominate Michael Whaley.
We have a nomination for Counsel Whaley. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. I'll now conduct a roll call vote. Counselor Newman?
Yes.
Counselor Jackson?
No.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes.
Counselor Merrick?
Yes.
Counselor Whaley?
Yes.
Counselor Stritchett?
Yes.
Counselor Langley?
Yes.
Congratulations, Counsel Whaley. I will now have the pleasure of turning the meeting over to you.
Do I hear a nomination for President Pro temp of the City Council?
I'd like to nominate Marcus Jackson.
Okay, we have a nomination for Marcus Jackson. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Counselor Newman?
No.
Counselor Jackson?
Yes.
Counselor Chambers?
No.
Counselor Whaley?
No.
Counselor Merrick?
No.
Counselor Stritchett?
Yeah.
Counselor Langley?
Yay.
The motion failed. Do I hear another nomination for President Pro temp of the Prattville City Council?
I nominate. I nominate Robert Stritchett.
Okay, I hear a nomination for Counselor Stritchett. Do we have a second? We do have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Counselor Newman?
No.
Counselor Jackson?
Yes.
Counselor Chambers?
No.
Counselor Whaley?
No.
Counselor Merrick?
No.
Counselor Stritchett?
Yay.
Counselor Langley?
No.
The motion failed. Do I hear another nomination for President Pro temp of the Prattville City Council?
I'd like to make a nomination.
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Chambers for Pro temp.
Okay, we have a motion for Counselor Chambers for Pro temp. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you have a roll call vote?
Counselor Newman?
Yes.
Counselor Jackson?
No.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes.
Counselor Whaley?
Yes.
Counselor Merrick?
Yes.
Counselor Stritchett?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor, congratulations, Counselor Pro temp.
Thank you, sir.
All right, at this time, we will move into the items on our agenda. Item number one is an ordinance to set council procedures for the 25 through 29 Quadrinium. Counselor Langley, will you introduce this item by title only, please?
Yes, I present an ordinance to set council procedures for the 2025 through 2029 Quadrinium.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order to vote on this item today, will we need to suspend the rules? I'm sorry, Counselor Chambers, second. In order to vote on this item today, we'll need to suspend the rules. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
Should I move?
Okay, moved by Counselor Chambers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Merrick. Madam Clerk, we conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Newman?
Yes.
Counselor Jackson?
Yes.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes.
Counselor Whaley?
Yes.
Counselor Merrick?
Yes.
Counselor Stritchett?
Yes.
Counselor Langley?
Yes.
All right, and the ordinance is now properly before us. Is there any discussion on this ordinance?
President Whaley, I would like to discuss a few things, but my notes are in my purse. I didn't realize I had to bring that up for the swearing in. How would you like me to handle that?
Let's just start with the first one and give the line. Page number and line of item of the line of the item.
Okay, Section 8 with addressing the council. Currently, no person, not a member of the council, shall be allowed to address the same while in session without permission of the presiding officer. This would be just a clarification. I would like to reaffirm that the city council is the governing body of council meetings as defined by Alabama State Code 1143-2. The mayor and other non-members are considered invited guests when addressing the council. All guests, including the mayor, should request permission to speak before approaching the podium. The presiding officer, the council president, should recognize speakers in advance to avoid interruptions or perceived pressure on the president and the council. This ensures order, fairness, and procedural integrity. Section 9, citizen participation and speaking time. In our current proposal, citizens are allowed three minutes to speak. I would like to extend citizen comment time to five minutes, which is consistent with the pre-2020 practice. Then, I would allow the presiding officer discretion to extend time when appropriate. Citizens should also not be required to verbally state their home address before speaking due to legitimate privacy and safety concerns. Instead, the council should reinstate a sign-in protocol at the podium or near the chamber entrance. This approach can save time that can be given back to the citizens in order to give them extra time to express their opinions and protects their right to privacy in live streaming and recording meetings. Five minutes respects citizens' courage and effort to address the council. Three minutes often limits their ability to convey concerns, especially for first-time and anxious speakers. This change reinforces that the council values citizen engagement, transparency, and personal Section 9.
Oh, just one second.
Yes.
So is this, this is on line 55 of page 1?
Okay, let's see.
Is this in the form of a? Could you make that in the form of a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we change line 55 from three minutes to five minutes per speaker.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor of the amendment to change line 55? All in favor of the amendment to change line 55 from three minutes to five minutes signify by raising your right hand? Do we need a roll call vote? No. Signify by raising your right hand. I'm sorry. Okay, all opposed, like sign? Okay, any abstain? All right, and that amendment has passed. All right, you may continue.
Thank you. I don't know that this is the right place to do this, and please correct me if I am inappropriately speaking here. The presentation environment, I would like us to put in our council procedures that we replace the, we have seven screens in the council chambers. And when our citizens are speaking, on the large screen is a huge countdown clock. I would like to replace that with some sort of seasonal photo of the city of Prattville, some sort of events, maybe the city seal, and put the countdown clock small in the corner. The current full-screen countdown appears harsh, and it can be very intimidating to citizens. A warmer and more inviting visual communicates respect and openness while maintaining boundaries. I think it places the focus, we want to hear what the voters are saying. I don't want the focus to be, we can't wait till you sit down because you only have three minutes. I think that out of the seven screens, we could put something up here and present a more respectful environment for the citizens.
Okay, is that in?
It is not.
This, okay, all right. Is there anything else in the ordinance that we're looking to amend?
Yes, there is. Okay, two things on section 17. The language of section 17. On line 30. Well, line 29, if the majority of the council shall vote in favor of the motion to go into executive session, the body shall then move into executive session. I would like to have clarification there that the governing body of the city council is the city council. City council members that are sitting up here at this dais. In state code, if there is someone that is pertinent to the information that we are discussing in executive session, they are then invited into the session to speak and to answer questions that the governing body has, and then they are to leave. So I think that in the past, the previous council procedures, there was a list of people who were to go into executive session. But according to the state code of Alabama, the governing body is the city council. I would like that to be clarified.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, we can make that a form of a motion. I would like, what number is that? Number 30, section 17, number 30. I would like to clarify that the city council is the governing body that will then go into executive session, and anyone else invited into executive session would be done prior to the meeting by our president.
All right, so currently it reads, the body shall then move into executive session to discuss matters for which the executive session was called. So your sentence of the attendees be invited by the president is that, where are you suggesting that we put that sentence? Which line?
I would suggest that we put that after the original line number 31.
Okay, so we have a motion to insert?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Odom, as far as legalities about what are discussed, executive sessions can be a myriad of things. I mean, we have economic development, we have personal matters, we have all kinds of matters. So everything's not apples, everything's apples and oranges with our executive sessions, with the experience that I have. I simply understand that. What are any illegal ramifications as far as this amendment?
I would advise that the city attorney be permitted to attend all executive sessions to ensure the Open Meetings Act is being followed. And of course, one of the provisions for the Open Meetings Act is discussions with attorney. There are very strict provisions as far as what can be discussed. Of course, there's no deliberation or no voting. So that would be my suggestion. But as to the legality of it, yes, it is articulated in state code.
All right, so we do have a motion to enter the sentence that was read at the end of line 31. All right, do we have a second?
I would second it, but I'd like to be able to discuss it before we vote on it.
All right, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion?
I figured out how to work this button, so give me a second. I think we should probably definitely straighten out the executive session participants. And I'm in agreement with Counselor Langley in that respect. I think we may need to be a little more specific about a few people that may need to come in. For example, the attorney probably does need to be present with the council, for example. So we may need to designate the council plus the attorney at a minimum, and then invite as needed, something along those lines, I think. Unless there's someone else that we think needs to be in the executive session legally, from a legal standpoint. But the council and the attorney at a minimum, I think should be.
May I interject here? Andrew, can you give us maybe some ideas or examples of how we could word that?
Sure, of course, it could be the sentence that Ms. Langley proposed and put at all times the city attorney.
Okay.
That'd be sufficient.
That goes back to your motion, or are you willing to amend it to say the city attorney?
I do have an issue with stating in there as an always our city attorney. There may be an executive session where we need to discuss things privately among the seven of us. State law allows for the city council to enter into executive session, and then Mr. Odom would be there should we need legal advice.
All right, so that. Yeah, the original amendment is still on before us, and it has a second. Is there any further discussion on the original amendment? Not hearing any? All in favor of the amendment as stated by Ms. Counselor Langley? Please signify by raising your right hand? Okay, all opposed, like sign? Okay, and that motion fails? All right, do we have any other discussion?
President Whaley, can we go back and clarify that the body, as it is stated, is the governing body, meaning the city council? My concern, my concern is, in the last quadrinium, there was a list of about 10 to 12 people that were considered, they were called body in the previous council procedures. And so I do think it is very important that we identify, based on state code, Alabama state code, that the city council is the governing body.
Correct. So Counselor Langley, what I would say is that the way this is written, if the majority of the council shall vote in favor of motion to go into executive session, the body shall then move into executive session to discuss the matter with which the executive session was called. Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but I interpret that sentence to mean the council body, the way it is written. Is that correct?
The council is the governing body of the city.
Yes, sir. So I think it is defined that the body is the council.
Okay, I get that, but.
Okay, hold on, I'm unaware of a list of people who are authorized. That is going to be at the discretion of the presiding officer, who is allowed to come into the executive session.
Okay, so in the previous council procedures, from 2020 to 2025, it specifically states the body, and then it lists all of these different individuals.
Okay, but do you see that in the procedures that we're voting on?
Don't, and that's what concerns me, is that it would default back to the previous body.
No, I interpret this along with the guidance of the city attorney, that the body is the council itself. I see no, I mean, I'm not sure how we would go back and find something else that's not written in the document that we're voting on now today. I'm not going to go back and look for something that, of the past, that was of the previous quadrinium to determine what that is. The current document before us does not have any kind of a list or any additions to the council itself. That is the body, the governing body is the council.
So our presumption, it doesn't say governing body, it says the body. I would like, I mean, that would make me feel better is if it did say the governing body, because that does limit it to state code.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes. I lost my paper here.
Page two, line 30.
I would like to make a motion on page two, line three, that body is changed to governing body.
All right, so we have a motion to change the verbiage on page two, line 30, to governing body. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We do have a second. All in favor of changing line 30 to said governing body signify by raising your right hand? Okay, all opposed, like sign? Okay, and the amendment passes. Are there any additional discussions on this ordinance that's before us?
I have one more. Hold on one second. I would just like to add some language in that same, in section 17, with executive sessions. The city council, as the governing body of the municipality under Alabama state code, may meet in executive session only for the purposes enumerated in Alabama Code 3625A-7. We give a list of things that would allow us to go into executive session, but I would like the Alabama state code to be added to section 17, which gives us the governing laws in order to do that.
All right, and is that in the form of a motion, and which line?
Line 19, the council may meet in executive session enumerated for, only for these purposes as authorized by Alabama Code 36-25A-7.
All right, that'll be at the end of the first sentence there on line 20, the code section, is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to add the code section to the end of that first sentence, which is on line 20. So the motion's before us, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand? Any opposed, like sign? Okay, the motion carries. All right, is there any other discussion on the ordinance that is before us for the, to set council procedures for the 2025-29 quadrinium? Okay, did you, do you have one?
No.
Okay. All right. So now the ordinance is properly before us as amended. Is there any discussion to the ordinance as amended? Okay, not hearing any? Roll call vote? I mean, the sec, sec, oh, raise your hand, all right. No further discussion as amended. All in favor of the ordinance that is before us as amended signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, like sign? Okay, and the motion does carry. All right, item number two is a resolution to provide procedure and criteria for the establishment of council meeting, agenda, and agenda packets for the 2025 through 2029 quadrinium. Counselor Merrick, will you introduce this item by title only, please?
Yes, sir. To provide procedure and criteria for the establishment of council meetings, agenda, and agenda packet for the 2025-29 quadrinium. I so move, sir President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
I have something I would like to discuss. On number eight, any member of the council may raise an objection to any violation of this procedure, and upon such objection, the matter shall not be considered without a unanimous vote. However, the failure to raise any objection is a waiver, and implied consent, and no action taken without objection shall be invalid for any violation of a procedure. I would like us to, the part that bothers me about that is that it's implied consent. We are not parliamentarians up here, and so if there is something within two weeks prior to the next council meeting that we see has been done improperly, I would like us to be able to amend that prior to the approval of the minutes at the following session.
All right, and is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, it is.
All right, can you restate that?
Sure. Excuse me, line 53. The council has the opportunity, prior to the approval of the minutes at the next council session, to remedy any parliamentary, I don't know, violations prior to the vote.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion? Andrew, is there? We're good as far as the wording that was provided?
Wouldn't use the word parliamentary. I would use the word legislative body.
Okay, is that?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on this amendment? Okay, not hearing any? All in favor of the amendment signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, like sign? Okay, and this amendment passes as well. Any other discussion on the resolution that's before us? Not hearing any? We are now, have the resolution as amended that is before us. We are now, have the resolution as amended that is before us. All in favor of the resolution as amended? Signify by raising your right hand? Any opposed, like sign? Okay, and this resolution does pass. This concludes the items on today's agenda and we will now move into closing comments. Councilor Newman?
Yeah, I wanted to take an opportunity to tell everybody, I appreciate you showing up and, you know, I'm looking forward to working really hard this term with the council and working as collaborative as possible. You know, it's been a long road for me personally to get to this seat and I'm honored to be here and I know there's a legacy behind me with Mr. Striplin and Mr. Sanders and I want to make sure that I honor that and work as hard as I can to serve the constituents in District One. You know, it's, um... Service is something that runs hard in our family deep and we take it serious and I want to make sure that I honor it that way. I'd also like to ask, in the future, that maybe we can rotate and not start with number one every, uh, every time, maybe work our way back so that I don't get put on the spot every week for the first one. Other than, I appreciate it and I'm looking forward to it. I think there's a lot of good things coming our way for the city. I'm happy to be here. That's all I guess I got to say.
Councilor Jackson?
I just want to say thank you to my family, my friends, all my constituents that came out today that have supported me over the last nine years and we look forward to moving the city forward and improving District Two. You know, that's a priority since that's my district. So we look forward to working hard, continue to work hard and fighting to improve that area as well as the entire community. But again, thank you to all of my friends, family, who took the time out to be with us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Chambers?
Yes, sir, I'm deeply honored and sincerely grateful for the opportunity to continue serving as your city council representative for another four years. It remains a privilege to represent the residents of District Three and to help guide our city's progress with purpose and accountability. First and foremost, I give all the glory to God for making this opportunity possible and for providing wisdom and strength throughout the journey. I'm especially thankful for the unwavering support of my wife, Lorna, my two daughters, Cannon and Chrissanne, and my two son-in-laws, John Paul and Guy, as well as my mother, who's here today. Their encouragement, patience and prayers have been a constant source of strength. To the citizens of District Three, thank you for your trust and your belief in my leadership. I do not take this responsibility lightly. I remain committed to working diligently, listening intentionally and representing your interests with integrity and transparency. I also want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to the many volunteers, friends and supporters who were instrumental in this campaign. Your time, dedication and belief and our shared vision made this journey possible and I'm truly grateful in your efforts. I extend my sincere congratulations to the mayor and to my fellow city council members on their elections. Since we begin this new term, I believe it is more important than ever that the city council and executive office work together with mutual respect, honor and strong communication. Our citizens deserve to see their leaders set the example, especially when there are differences of opinion by approaching every decision with professionalism, civility and unity rather than rhetoric or division. Together, we have a tremendous opportunity to build on the progress we've made and to continue shaping a future that reflects the best of Prattville. Strong families, thriving businesses, safe neighborhoods and a spirit of cooperation that unites us all. I look forward to working with each of you to ensure that Prattville remains a community we are all proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chambers. Councilor Merrick?
Yes, sir, I think we need to put a timer on Chambers going forward. I love you, brother. And well said, my friend. Oh, my time's up. I just want to say it's been, it's an honor to, uh, to serve our council for District Four again. I want to thank my constituents, the ones that, uh, that voted. We have a great district. We've done some good things over the past three years and we're going to do some more for the next four, as well as for our whole city. Councilwoman Langley? Councilman Newman? Glad you're here and looking forward to working with you for the next... Councilor Jackson? Councilor Chambers? Haley? Councilman Strichett? It's been an honor and I'm glad that we're all going to be working together again. I want to thank you, Mom, for keeping me straight all these years. I know my dad tried his best too and I love you. For the ones that helped with my campaign, I can't thank you enough, whether it's signs or knocking on doors or telling me to get out early instead of waiting a couple hours later. Sir Starnes, I learned that from you three years ago. To my second father, Governor Wayne Thorn. Silas Starnes, I know he's looking down, probably having a cold one with Dad right now. Ms. Shirley, Ms. Joyce, Shannon. I couldn't have done this without you. You live in fair hope and you sacrifice so much time and energy and I love you so, so very much. I want to thank everybody that's here today because you care about this town, you care about this community. And Chief Bingham, Marty Rooney, Carla. Louis Colley, I can't thank you enough, I appreciate you very much. Mr. Mayor? I love you, sir. Thank you for everything you've done for our community. Lisa, Dawn, Paula. Okay, I think I passed Tanya Chambers' time, so I'll move it back. Thank you, Councilor Merrick. Councilor Strichett?
Yeah, I'd like to thank constituents of District Six for allowing me to serve a third term. I thank you for your trust and you appreciate my honesty, my integrity and my transparency and the hard work that I've put in for my district for over the last nine years. I'm looking forward to the next four. I'd also like to thank my family. My wife, Dr. Strichett, who regretfully could not be here today because of a meeting that she's in charge of. My daughter, Madison. My son, Will. My sister for standing in for me today for Tracy, Linda Graham. My firstborn, Dr. Strichett, Catherine Elizabeth Strichett, for swearing me in. Thank you all so much and I'm looking forward to the next four years. And I'd also like to remember my inspiration, Honorable C. Ray Price, who was my mentor, who has led me to this chair. And his, um, my dear friend, his brother-in-law, Judge Colley for bringing me in as well. Thank you all. Jerry, I learned a lot from you when I was on this seat, when you were, when you were here with us and I appreciate your help as well. And to Laura Lee Boone, thank you. You mean a lot to me over the last nine years and you're always there to support me and I thank you for all that you've done for me. And we'll set the ground running and improve our community even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Strichett. Councilor Langley?
I would just like to mimic what all of these councilmen have said. We went to the League of Municipalities training this week and all of us were in attendance. Strichett was not able to attend, but it was a really good time to get together and to, we ate lunch together, we shared some funny stories, we compared what years we graduated from high school. That was number one. They wanted to show that Newman and I are the oldest of the group and they wanted to put us in our place immediately. But I am looking forward to this. I am looking forward to continuing the transparency for the citizens of Prattville. I am looking forward to increasing the transparency for the citizens of Prattville. I'm looking forward to finding out where we are with live streaming our meetings. There's a lot of things that we have done through the years and Mayor, thank you for the part that you have played in that role. I appreciate that. I appreciate the, the opportunities for community and for fellowship. You guys have done a great job in doing that. We've got some wonderful directors. I have had the opportunity to invest in the sanitation department over the past month and to get to know Tracy in sanitation. I've gotten to know Chief Bingham well over the past few weeks and, and we've got some really, really great... Charlotte's back there, she's been there forever and, and she does a phenomenal job for us and Kelly does a great job. And me not calling your name doesn't mean I don't think you do a great job. It's just, there's so many to name and Prattville is a phenomenal community. We have great leaders, but we have even better citizens. And our citizens have great ideas. And our citizens have things that they want to impart to us and to share with us and I, for one, am so excited to sit up here and hear you and hear your ideas and then try to implement what we can to make Prattville a better community for all of us. So, thank you guys for coming. Clyde, it's good to see you. Kelvin, it's always good to see you. And Jerry, thank you for coming. I think Judge Lewis may have headed out, but it's always a pleasure to see him as well. I look forward to it, guys. Congratulations, President Whaley. Congratulations, Pro Tem. You guys are going to do a great job. Thank you.
Well, first I'd like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for saving me and daily guiding my steps. I could not do this without the loving support of my wife, Leslie, my children, Noah, Mattie and Jacob, and our two littles. I was blessed with the support of the people of District Five in securing a victory in a special election two years ago and I've been doubly blessed to continue to represent these great people as an unopposed candidate in this most recent election. I'm deeply humbled by your continued support and vote of confidence. I'm eager to work with this council and the mayor to ensure open lines of communication internally, fostering an environment where efficiency and accountability strengthen public trust in the areas of transparency, public involvement and fiscal responsibility. Together, we will continue to provide our employees with fair compensation and benefits for their work while striving to responsibly provide the tools and equipment necessary for them to adequately carry out the services and functions that we have charged them to accomplish. I can attest that our city employees are the primary component of who we are and they do a great job and all we ask of them. I can say that this council will strive to strengthen established relationships with our partners and seek to establish new relationships that will enable the city to become more strategic in its move through this next quadrinium and beyond. We will ensure open lines of communication with our state partners in the Alabama Senate and House of Representatives, as well as the many state agencies that provide valuable resources to our city. Our county partners in our Otoga and Elmore County Commissions, our local boards of education, our local EMAs and our Chamber of Commerce and local EDA, which are vital partners in economic development. We will openly communicate with the agencies that perform important services in our community, like the YMCA, the Otoga Character Coalition, the Butterfly Bridge Children Advocacy, the Family Support Center and Otoga Interfaith Care Center, to ensure that the needs of our residents are being met and to keep abreast of any new issues that may arise. We will seek to communicate with and receive reports from various civic and service organizations like the Lions, Rotary, Civitan, as well as the VFW and American Legion. In closing, I want to thank this council for your trust and your support. I've said this before and I'll say it again, a council is a body of people gathered for deliberation or advice, serving in an official legislative capacity. This body encompasses seven individual counselors who individually can't do anything. I hope that we can work together with the mayor and our residents and continue to move Prattville forward. Thank you. This is a reminder that there is a small reception that is set up immediately following our adjournment. It is in this hallway, in the HR conference room. Our next meeting is tomorrow, November the fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at six PM. And at this time, Fire Chief Josh Bingham will give our benediction. Thank you, Chief Bingham. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, all in favor, say yes? All opposed by no? All right, we are adjourned.